There we go. Welcome, everybody. Great to see good turnout here tonight. Wonderful to have engaged citizens, residents, participants here. I'm Megan Cope, I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. And maybe we'll just introduce the others who are here and then have the other planning commissioners who are online, just say hello and state their names.
I'm Jacob Kager, Planning Commissioner.
I'm Ellie Beckett, Planning Commissioner.
And other commissioners. There's Kate, wave again, Kate. And who else is here?
Can you scroll over? Emily, did you want me to move?
If you could take the, if the chair between Megan and Ellie, we can shift them over just in case more folks come in and make them publicly available. So you guys can stay in the same seats with these open chairs, just like shift them around.
Oh, you need to share some sauce.
Yeah, the chairs themselves, just in case more folks come rolling in, that we have enough seats for people.
Okay, so.
I'm not sure if I can make it available for people out of the country. I have to go into the backend settings.
Wow, we've achieved an international standing. This issue is, it's so, people are so passionate about it. Okay, great.
Maybe see now if they're able to get in, but I'm not sure if that backend setting, like without canceling the meeting and restarting it, if it'll work. The meeting will be recorded so they can attend it.
So we've introduced our planning commissioners to, we have the staff.
Sure, Matt Bonjé, Planning Director.
I'm Emily Hayman, I'm Senior Planner.
Cool, so before we get going.
I think Melinda's online, I don't know if you want to.
Oh yeah, Melinda and Simon from our planning office are also attending online.
Megan, I apologize for being late. This is Shayla, Planning Commission Member.
Hi Shayla.
And Alex Daily too, Planning Commission Member.
Excellent. Everybody's rolling in right on time here. Okay, great. So, thank you for those introductions. And now I'd like to open it to public comment for things that are not on the agenda. I suspect most of you are here for things that are on the agenda. Does, does anybody have any public comments or items that are not otherwise covered tonight? And if you're online, it would be super helpful for us if you raise your virtual hand.
Yeah.
Just because they're easier to see.
Put you to the front of the.
So the screen I'm sharing does say Development Review Board. We are actually at the Planning Commission meeting. I'm stealing their slides for Zoom introductions. So for folks who are attending on Zoom, you can rename yourself by clicking on the participant section of the toolbar or commenting on it. For tonight's meeting, folks with computers in the room or phones, please keep everything on silent and muted. For participants on Zoom, you have a lot of settings on your toolbar. Most importantly is the mute and unmute button on the far left. Please keep yourself muted when you are not speaking to reduce background noise. Keeping your camera on is optional to your preference. Turning the camera off will also help if you're having that internet connection. Please use the chat section on the toolbar to message us with any technical questions you may have. Simon or Andrew will be able to help you out if you're having issues with Zoom. During the meeting, we'll be using shared screen. Also, if you're a telephone participant, you can press star nine on your keypad to raise your hand or star six to mute and unmute. Online attendees, you can also press the raise hand button on your toolbar to speak. We'll be using screen share, so if you're on Zoom, click the green bar view options and choose side-by-side mode to toggle between the video participant feed and the document we're sharing to optimize your view. Lastly, if you're having internet issues, try turning off your video, closing other tabs or programs. You can also use your telephone as a speaker by clicking the up arrow by the microphone and following the prompts. As always, send a message to Andrew if you're having issues with Zoom. Thank you.
So we are going to start with a overview from the staff. That was just our little introduction to managing Zoom and protocols and etiquette. Now, I would like to turn it over to the staff for the talk of this event.
Speak up a little bit, kind of hard to hear.
Sure, we'll do.
So, tonight in front of the Planning Commission, we have an initial stage of the review of an application for a specific plan. We're calling it the Glazer Specific Plan after the name of the owners of the land. And what's going to follow here from myself and Emily is a brief overview of the specific plan process, how it works in terms of other types of development review that are done in Williston and how the review of a specific plan might proceed as the Planning Commission makes its decisions about how to proceed over it. So, specific plan is something that's quite different in Williston. It's quite unique. It doesn't happen very often. It is very similar to the planned unit development process that occurs in many municipalities in Vermont. And it is a way for someone who wants to develop a piece of land in a way that will achieve the goals of the town plan, but requires some flexibility from the town zoning bylaws to ask the Planning Commission and ultimately the Select Board to consider amending the zoning bylaws and possibly even the town plan itself to allow that project to go forward. And so it's functionally a legislative process, a change to the zoning for a specific proposal to move forward on a specific piece of property. And the procedures and boundaries for how a specific plan can be reviewed, assessed for compliance with the bylaw and ultimately possibly approved is contained within the Williston Unified Development Bylaw, Chapter 9. So the quotes that you see up here are from Chapter 9 of Williston Zoning Bylaw. So this is a path to change that conventional zoning in a way that is different from what we would normally do. And the reason that this is allowable is because there would be detailed performance standards and in this case, an actual specific plan under which the property could be developed under the changed bylaws. In other words, you're changing the development standards a little bit, but only that project which was proposed as part of that change can move forward under those changes. And the beginning of the process and the key first step is that the Planning Commission makes a finding. Can you go back to substantial public benefit there, bottom bullet there? The Planning Commission would need to make a finding that a substantial public benefit could result from the approval of the specific plan. And Chapter 9 of Williston's bylaws goes on to define very pointedly what a substantial public benefit is. These are the possible substantial public benefits that could be provided by a project seeking specific plan approval. So point here is that an applicant cannot just come in and say, "I'm going to do something that's beneficial for the town. Please change your zoning so I can do my development." They have to be offering something that's on this list. And in the case of the Glazer Specific Plan, the defined substantial benefit from the bylaw that's being proposed is open space. The conservation of one or more open space assets, that means pieces of land identified in the town plan or another open space asset acceptable to the Conservation and Planning Commissions. And later tonight, we'll talk about the open space conservation that the applicant has proposed and how it aligns with the ident, how it has been identified in the town plan as an asset for conservation. So, tonight we're holding the community meeting for the Planning Commission. This is the beginning of a process that will ultimately return to the Planning Commission before moving on to the Select Board. These meetings are all public. And in this case, as you'll hear from the staff, what we're recommending, if the Planning Commission does choose to move forward, is that it establish an advisory committee to work through the particulars of this specific plan's proposal and then return to the Planning Commission with a recommended decision after they have done their work. So there are some options the Planning Commission has tonight. One would be to say no. One would be to say that the Commission has not determined that a substantial community benefit is a likely result of approving the plan. Another option would be yes, there could be a possible substantial benefit that arises from the approval of this plan. And that a committee should be established to review that plan. The third option, we labeled yes, without committee. The Planning Commission, in some cases, has opted to say yes, a benefit could result. We're not going to appoint a committee. We're going to take that work on ourselves and review the plan ourselves. And in the case of simpler or possibly less controversial plans or times when the planning commission's workload's been a little less, they've opted to do that. This is a process that has been used before in Williston. There's been a couple of different proposed specific plans. There was an approved plan to expand zoning back up the hill behind Hurricane Lane to allow for the construction of a very specific office building on that parcel for a very specific employer who was proposing to come to town. That plan was approved, but the folks who wanted to build the office building evaporated, ceased to exist as a company. And that plan was essentially invalidated unless somebody else wanted to build that very same exact office building. Ultimately, the owner decided to put a solar farm on that parcel for now. A approved, another considered specific plan was Maple Leaf Farm to provide addiction treatment services at the former Pine Ridge School. That application began the specific plan process, but was ultimately withdrawn. And then later, we had a subsequent application at Pine Ridge to change the allowed uses in the zoning bylaw to allow the New England Theological Seminary to operate on that site. So the zoning where Pine Ridge is would not allow nets to be there. It's not an allowed use in the zoning district. Nets requested a specific plan approval to be able to operate their use in a zoning district where it is not normally allowed in exchange for a public benefit, granting 42 acres to the town of Williston of the former Pine Ridge lands and 29 acres under conservation easements. So that's in a specific plan that was approved that moved forward, that resulted in the town getting a benefit and an applicant being able to do something they would not have otherwise been able to do under zoning. More recently, we did have an application for an expansion of the New England Chimney Supply Building and Site over on Williston Road near Commerce Street. This specific plan proposal would have amended the bylaw by moving the boundary between the industrial and residential zoning districts and allowing an industrial user to expand into this added industrial land. That would have also had to amend the town plan because in our town plan, the future land use map has the same boundaries as the zoning districts. So that plan went partway through the review process, including review by a committee appointed by the Planning Commission. But ultimately, when the plan was returned to the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission denied approval of that plan because it was not apparent that the substantial benefit in that case, which involved a pedestrian facility along Williston Road all the way to Brownell Road, would be feasible for the applicant to construct. There were some permissions and a funding commitment that the applicant couldn't obtain and couldn't make to the satisfaction of the Commission. The Commission said then, "We're not going to move forward with the plan to move that zoning boundary because we don't, we're not sure that the benefit can happen." So this is a tool that's been in existence in Williston since at least 2007, codified its bylaws in 2009. And as you can see, used one way or the another by the Planning Commission a couple of times across its history. It's important to note, and Emily, let me know whenever you want to take over talking. I'm rolling. That when an applicant pursues a specific plan or any kind of permit really from the town, it doesn't preclude them from pursuing other options at the same time. So we have an applicant pursuing a specific plan to create a development on a piece of land. Folks who have pieces of land that they'd like to develop do have other options, including pursuing conventional development review, pursuing conservation of their land or other options, including, you know, sale to somebody, et cetera. So we just wanted to put up this slide to remind folks that people can pursue multiple outcomes for the same piece of property and that doesn't prejudice the review for or against any of them. And really, only when someone starts acting on a permission they've gained and actually developing do they start precluding themselves from pursuing other options. So more normally, sometimes we've had properties before the Development Review Board that already have a permit to do one thing, but they're pursuing a permit to do something else and they haven't done anything yet. And that is perfectly fine and normal and okay. The decision to abandon one of those options comes when somebody decides to pursue one and actually start developing. So we've heard some comments, seen some responses in the surveys about the owners. Wouldn't they be interested in a full conservation option? Could somebody buy this land, et cetera? And we just wanted to highlight that there's nothing about their pursuit of a specific plan that would prevent them or any other applicant in this process from doing that.
Yeah, and in terms of timeline, you know, if the Planning Commission moved this forward, they'd establish that advisory committee sometime in December. They give that committee a deadline, most likely, I want to say maybe April to May-ish, maybe March. But sometime in the spring, late winter, early spring, that committee would present their proposal to the specific, to the Planning Commission. And they don't have to go through the bylaw adoption process, which is hearings with the Planning Commission, hearings with the Select Board. So that would likely happen, you know, at the fastest rate, maybe Planning Commission hearings sometime in the summer and Select Board late summer, fall. So it is a long timeline, you know, to work through all these various boards, both with, you know, developing the specific plan, all the work that has to go into it, and then the required unnoticed deadlines, you know, a meeting, a hearing has to be noticed within a certain amount of time before it's actually held. So there's a lot of time between tonight and if it moves forward, when it would be, you know, coming back around for our Planning Commission hearing. So the specific plan is about amendments to the town plan and the zoning bylaws and upholding those policies, refining them, but not changing them wholesale. So our town plan does have several objectives, overall visions for growth and development as well as scenic rural landscapes. These are stated on the overall vision page of the town plan. There's also specific objectives about scenic view sheds. And this actual view shed on the Glazer's property, the field southwest of the intersection of Mountain View and Old Stage, is highlighted as a view shed that's not currently protected. Working landscapes are also noted in the town plan. The word horse and horseback riding only appears twice in the town plan in reference to use of country parks and town trails, but I would akin it to fee-based outdoor recreation, where it would be grouped in that type of category for a working landscape. It's somewhere between agriculture and fee-based recreation. The town plan is implemented generally in two ways, regulatory tools, the zoning bylaws, and non-regulatory tools, like an environmental reserve fund or encouraging landowners to engage in current use for a conservation easement. Our regulatory tools we'll discuss tonight are the performance standards for development and the visual assessment map. So the town has all these goals and the regulatory way you get at it is creating zoning districts, having residential density standards, places where commercial use is and is not allowed, that type of thing. The purpose of the residential zoning district, these are quotes from Chapter 39 for the residential zoning district. It includes Williston suburban neighborhoods. Those development standards in court encourage a somewhat more compact, diverse pattern of development. And it typically is a pattern that includes open space resources and it results in a pedestrian-friendly neighborhood. The base density is three DUE per acre and it can be increased to five where there's a provision of affordable housing. Affordable housing is not required, it's incentivized. And throughout the night, you might hear us refer to a DUE. A dwelling unit equivalent is used for density and growth management, where a studio or one-bedroom unit is considered half a DUE, whereas a unit with two or more bedrooms is a whole DUE, dwelling unit equivalent. Open space is generally required, but there's no quantitative minimum and it should be contiguous wherever possible. There are some loud uses in open space like ag and forestry, parks, and limited road crossings, landscape buffers, et cetera. These are the standards for open space development. I'm highlighting the words should and must because those are very important when a development is being reviewed by the DRB. Open space must include watershed wetland buffers and it must include a significant habitat area. But it becomes more nebulous with scenic view sheds and farmlands. In fact, there's even statements in the zoning district chapter that people should expect to have views of neighborhood, residential neighborhoods in the RZD. And protecting farmland is not a primary goal of the RZD. So how does open space work in a traditional subdivision? You take a parcel of land. If you split it up into 12 units, they would be spread out across the whole parcel. In an open space subdivision, you would consolidate those units into one part of the land, preserving some open space. So it would have an appearance of being denser because the units are consolidated. But overall, with or without open space, both these subdivisions are some 12 units just in a different layout and one with open space. And really quickly to highlight some data about residential growth. Within the past 15 years, 75% of the new dwellings in town have been created in the growth center. That's the red zone, which includes the newly created tap corners for based code area. And about a quarter are in the remainder of the town in the yellow and green zones. A Glazer is approximately right here at the corner of Mountain View and Old Stage Road. The blue parts of town are industrial, where we don't allow residential uses. And I can refer back to these slides throughout the meeting as the Planning Commission or public has questions.
So our next part of the evening will be a presentation from the applicant. And Ken, are you representing Glazers or are you?
Yes, indeed.
Okay, all right.
I know, I know some of you here in the room, but for those that don't know me, my name is Ken Belavog. And I'm here representing the Glazers for the applicants. Mr. Glazer had intended to be here, had a previous commitment, a business commitment, a conference that's scheduled annually, precluded him being here tonight. So he sends his regrets. He does intend to participate. If there is a panel, the Planning Commission moves in that fashion. Mr. Glazer has said that he intends to participate in that. Certainly, he's open to speaking about what his goals are and what, with things that he would be open to doing relative to the piece of land. So so I've been asked to represent them. So up on the screen there, Emily has, this is the draft plan, most of it, looks like it's truncated there at the bottom. And there we go. So that shows the entire subject property, which is on the southwest corner of Mountain View Road and Old Stage Road. And so that's the entire property. It's, it's not quite 100 acres, 97 acres in land, of land area. So we, we have been in front of the Planning Commission a couple of times formally. Back, I want to say last winter, roughly a year ago, something like that. And then we were in front of the Planning Commission two months ago, I think. And at that, it was at that meeting that we showed a draft plan. When we were in front of the Planning Commission formally, the planning, you know, we sort of talked very general about the parcel of land and Planning Commission said, "Yeah, okay, well, we'll entertain it, but give us something to react to, give us something more specific." So since that time, we have had what's called a wetlands delineation done. And a wetlands delineation is sort of a standard thing that anybody that's looking to figure out what the development potential of their property is, it is or should be one of the very first things that you would do. So a delineation that was done, we knew just from casual observation that there were going to be some wetlands present on the property. Anybody that knows anything about land in Williston wouldn't necessarily be surprised by that because there are lots of wetlands everywhere. Soils don't necessarily drain very well. As part of that wetlands delineation of that 97 acres, there's roughly, I don't have the number in front of me. And the wetlands appear essentially in two different areas. There's sort of the southwest corner, which is shaded there in green. I can rub the cursor over there, Emily. That's an area where all of it may not be a wetland. But if there are any upland portions in there, which we think there may be, they're probably not areas that would be usable and reachable. So in our analysis, we simply said, "We're just going to call it all wetland." There's nothing there that we could probably use, we'll call it all wetland, including the wetland buffer that's required into Vermont State law. And then there's a second area, which is kind of in the middle of the property. It extends from Old It extends from Old Stage Road and then extends mostly westward. And between those pieces of land, there are two development areas that we have identified, potential development areas. And you can see where the, the road has been sketched in and there's these sort of footprints for the various, the various houses that are proposed there. Now to the north is an area that it's an upland area. This is all this frontage along Mountain View Road and it's roughly eleven acres. That's an upland area, mean, meaning it's not a wetland. And it would not be required under state law or under the basic provisions of the bylaw to be set aside or, you know, to be set aside and not be developed. That's also the area that is the prime view shed. As staff has already indicated, that is identified in the town plan and in the bylaw that the town would like to see get preserved. So we're showing it as a potential open space area as part of the plan. As we proposed it, it would be available to be dedicated to the town, meaning the town gets it at no cost. Just the property is given to the town. We know from some of the commentary that was received by the staff prior to our submitting this application, that there has, that there is a lot of community interest in seeing the horse farm, wind swept farm be preserved and that use be preserved. So there is the potential for that open space area, Emily is highlighting it there. That would be in the southern portion, that could still be used for the horses. Horses, the use of horses under state law is considered an agricultural use. And so there are things you can do in a wetland agriculturally that you can't necessarily do in terms of development. So as we've proposed it, that area could also be dedicated for the, to the town. The town could own it. As far as the, you know, it would be up to the town to make a decision as to whether the horse farm would be able to use it. I would point out that there certainly is a precedent of where the town owns a piece of land and it has leased it for a dollar to a farmer to farm it. And I'm talking about the Mahan Farm, which is across the street from the fire station. Some of you may or may not know, that land is owned by the town. And it's leased to the conference in Richmond and they grow corn on it almost every year. So there certainly is some precedent there, the town could do that. But as part of the application, those land areas would, would be offered to the town, for the town to be able to own them. As far as the view shed is concerned, if, if anybody's spent any time up on Mountain View Road, you know that, that the road itself is kind of a high point. And if you look to the south, you look down towards the village, it drops off pretty significantly. When I went up there, I don't know, several weeks ago to post the property, I I couldn't find a place on the side of Mountain View Road I could park my car without risking serious damage to it. So, so the land does really drop off. And which is, you know, that view shed, it's across that meadow, but it's also a part of that is the view of the mountains, including Camel Sound. And as part of our proposal, we, we were remiss in not including a legend of the structures. But on the structures that we would propose, that we'd propose, there are those yellow ones, those would all be one-story buildings. So the idea was you wouldn't have really, really tall buildings that could potentially obscure or hinder that, that view of the mountains or what people would be able to see of, of the village. So the Glazers have owned this property for about twenty years. They've owned it for a long time. Apparently there was a, a big development that was proposed here on this property, I want to say back in the days before my time around Williston, but I have seen a plan of it. And from what I've been told, the Glazers at that point were in a position where they were able to step forward and buy the property and preserve it in the state that it's in today. The Glazers are now at a point where things are changing in their life and they're looking to basically to, to, to sell the property. And but there is really an interest and that's the, some version of the plan that was shown years ago. They do have an interest in trying to work with the town. We know that there's interest in the horse farm. We know that there's interest in the view shed. The Glazers are sensitive to that. They would like to work with the town and see if there's a way that those ends could be accomplished at the same time that they might be able to get an economic benefit from the land. So that's sort of in a nutshell, what their intention is. After doing the wetlands delineation and the analysis, with the remaining portion of the property, my little table up here, so I don't say anything. So you have roughly forty-seven acres that are left after you do the wetlands delineation. Under the basic provisions of the residential zoning district, which as Emily stated, allows three dwelling units per acre. That would give you a potential maximum dwelling unit yield of a hundred and forty-one dwellings. We're not proposing a hundred and forty-one dwellings, we're proposing a hundred dwellings, so roughly a third less. And the idea is that the Glazers feel like those numbers could work for them. At the same time that the open space assets that we talked about would still have the potential to be preserved, including the view shed and potential continued use of the horse farm. As part of the request, the Glazers are also asking to get an alternative, let's call it a growth management schedule, where they would be able to build no more than twenty-five dwelling units per year. And that would be in lieu of going through the conventional growth management review process. So that is another aspect of the request. It's actually, it's an important aspect of the request. I'm not gonna, I'm not going to state otherwise. It is, it's, it's, it's the biggest aspect from the, from the applicant standpoint as part of the request. In addition to that, because one of those building pods has more than forty dwelling units, under the bylaw, you have to have two roads, meeting road standards to get in and out. There's been some discussion with the staff about that there may be other alternatives that may be acceptable to the town. Some kind of an emergency, whether it would be sort of a, a path and or built to a standard that would allow a vehicle to travel over it for an emergency use or whatever. That is also a portion of what is included in the request. And I think those are the main points of what it is that we have actually, we have actually proposed. I did see that there was lots of interest in terms of survey and some questions. I would certainly, I'm here to try to answer as many of those as possible. I think it is a fair statement to say, you know, that, that this is the plan that we have come up with to propose in response to the planning commission saying they want to see something more specific. So here's something that is more specific. We have done a piece of the engineering needed for wetlands delineation. And but we also understand that it's likely to change as we get additional commentary as part of the process. And we're willing to engage with the town on that. So. So I got many.
Okay, thank you, Ken. Did you want to go over the survey results?
Yeah, so a quick overview as well of the agenda up ahead for tonight. So a brief overview of the survey results and some responses to those. Then it'll be general time for the planning commission to ask questions, for the public to ask questions and provide comments. The planning commission around eight fifteen can decide if they're ready to move forward and to start discussing the decision options ahead. Or Megan, if you wanted to continue the public comment as well. So we had a survey that was mailed to about a property owners. It was posted online. We extended the deadline. So as of today at two P M., there's been sixty responses and three letters. All of the survey responses are made available to the planning commission before the meeting. So they have time to review everything that was submitted online in the survey and in the letters. And I provided, I want to, I call it the mega F A Q document. So a lot of the reoccurring themes, comments and questions. I've provided this document with information, you know, about existing and proposed multi-use path connections throughout the area, schools, sewer, traffic, a lot of those major topics that come up in development review and should try to provide a comprehensive answer linking to available documents. But as those things come up in conversation, we can refer back to this document. So, yeah, Megan, I guess if you wanted to start with planning commission questions and comments before going to the public. The one last thing I'll note is the staff report. So this is the detailed document that we kind of gave an overview of with the PowerPoint. It explains some information about substantial benefit, going above and beyond the bylaw. Met request, amendment request to growth management. And on the last page, if the planning commission reviews this forward, the specific findings that they would need to make in order to authorize it to go forward. Thank you.
Okay, so let's start then with questions from the planning commission members in the room. If you are online, if you could, again, please use the Zoom version of the hand ratings because it bumps you up to the top and we can see you.
I have two areas. The first is, I probably would help people in the audience to, to explain exactly what the zoning change is, which is related to growth management as well as number of houses on the road. Just to outline what that means. Sure. So as some of you may know, Williston has a middle step in the residential subdivision review process called growth management, where normally projects that have been through the pre-application or, or sketch plan stage of review during the previous calendar year are all reviewed by the development review board at a growth management hearing that occurs in the following March. And those projects pursuant to the metrics in chapter eleven of the Williston zoning bylaw are scored preliminarily by staff and, and ultimately by vote of the D R B against specific attributes of those developments that are incentivized by the growth management section of the bylaw. And then the development review board assigns a phasing schedule to some or all of each development based on that score. In other words, how many units that development is allowed to build in each of the upcoming years across up to a ten-year horizon. And I'm, I'm simplifying this a little bit. We often end up in this conversation with applicants saying, well, we have this great big spreadsheet that, that we use to identify how units are scheduled in growth management. But the point I'd like to make about it is this, this page is about the growth center and this page is about where the Glazer property is, particularly that table right there that Emily's highlighting. And what that table says is that conventional subdivisions, any new dwelling units that are created in the residential zoning district of Williston, as well as in the village zoning district of Williston, those new units have to fit on this table. And what this table provides, provides for is fifteen market rate dwelling unit equivalents each year and five affordable dwelling unit equivalents each year for a total of twenty units each year. And every residential subdivision that's looking to move forward and build units competes in the growth management process for the limited number of slots on this table. So we're looking at twenty dwelling unit equivalents a year. We're looking at ten years' worth, that's two hundred. So you can do the math really quickly and understand that when Williston is experiencing proposals for multiple projects with more than one hundred units each, under the rules for the allocation of the growth management schedule, it gets very crowded very quickly and, and it, and it's competitive. And what that means is we're getting to a point in this part of town, which is, which is everywhere that we provide sewer and allow residential growth that's not in the growth center, sewer service area outside growth center. This system is getting quite constrained. There's not a lot of room left. And that means that a path forward for some other applicant like the Glazers who would like to develop may not be, may not exist under a timeline that looks out over the next ten years under this system. The other thing about growth management is it does incentivize certain things. The provision of affordable housing, the way the subdivision is laid out, the diversity of housing types, et cetera. But it doesn't necessarily incentivize everything that the town plan says the town wants. So in the residential, in the, in the sewer service area outside the growth center where we're talking about, there are some things that are incentivized, but one thing I would say that is not captured in this incentive system is the idea of giving open space to the town. That, that actually is more incentivized out in the agricultural rural residential part of town, but not so much in the R Z D.
We're setting up the legal mechanisms for a neighboring farm to continue operations.
Right, supporting a working landscape the way is proposed under this one. So the bylaw by the growth management system, it makes a fair attempt at incentivizing some things, but it certainly doesn't capture everything that the town wants. You have an applicant in front of you who would not be able to move forward with their development, just given what's already booked into that growth management system, but has something else they could offer the town that the town plan says the town would like to have. That's why we're here in front of the planning commission and talking about a specific plan because for somebody to move forward with a residential development that does not fit on that table we were showing you, there would need to be an amendment to Williston zoning. Effectively, Williston would need to create a, a schedule or a special table for this project to allow it to move forward on some other approved schedule. So Chapin, that's my long-winded answer to your question is the major amendment to the bylaw proposed by this specific plan is for this project to have its own individual growth management schedule outside of the schedule that's identified in the bylaw, that would allow it to proceed at a pace that would be identified as part of the approval of the project. The other change from what the bylaw allows is related to the number of dwelling units that can be served on any one dead-end road or any one road with one point of access to another road. Williston zoning bylaw sets that limit at forty dwelling units. This project in both cases has a few more than forty dwelling units on each of those dead-end roads. And that's an access standard in zoning. It is almost entirely related to public safety and, and the ability to serve residential developments with emergency services equipment. Forty is, is a number that was determined by the town many years ago to be the, the reasonable number that a conventional subdivision could develop on a dead end and still be adequately serviceable by town equipment. It doesn't mean it's the only possible way a residential development could be serviceable by town equipment or emergency services. It's the way that zoning identifies. The applicant The applicant, in exchange for some design elements of this plan, is asking for an amendment to the bylaw for this plan that would allow more than forty dwelling units on a dead-end road. So if I could reflect back from what Ken said about wanting to build twenty, no more than twenty a year, twenty-five a year. So within four or five years, it would be adding a hundred housing units to our growth management limits that we set up because we were trying to limit growth in Williston. So that's sort of the, the price that Williston would pay is having more, giving an exception to growth management to allow a hundred more houses in the next four or five years. That's correct. Should I go on to my second? My second one is, I guess I should say too, if it would, for me as a planning commission member, I just would say upfront, one criteria this would have to meet would be to have a much higher score than the thirty points it sort of gets now. It would have to have been meet, meeting, be at the top of the growth management list already for us to make an exception to let it go ahead. It wouldn't make sense to me to have somebody that didn't meet the growth management incentives and still put it ahead of things that do. The other thing is under our conventional rules and regulations, we encourage open space and so forth. And so in the D R B process, a project like this would be massaged such that there was open space and clustering of homes and views would be retained as much as was practical and so forth. And I just wonder how different would I understand that one difference is somebody could put houses right next to Mountain View Road. But other than that, does this proposal look significantly different than what would come out of the normal development review process? I think Chapin, the greatest difference would be that you would very likely see homes proposed adjacent to Mountain View Road, probably on a, on an additional street, or you might see some, some cul-de-sacs coming up from what's there. Suffice to say, I think more development would occupy that corner than does under this layout. It's probably the biggest functional difference. There's, there's probably some room for a few more houses along Old Stage Road and a few other places you might see somebody work to maximize that, particularly if they were shifting units around to stay within that forty unit on a dead-end metric, or they might go and, and try to create a second access to overcome that. There are a lot of feasible designs. I, I think the, the boundary would be, you would not see homes in the wetland or wetland buffer.
Or probably to that forested area.
Probably not, but
Maybe some of it's challenging. So I
Could I, could I add make a point? You would see most likely an additional forty houses. So that I think would drive the rest of the answer to that question, which is that where would those other forty houses go? They would go in that proposed area of open space by and large up along Mountain View Road. And as Matt has indicated, there would it would be at least one road access from Mountain View Road to deal with the forty dwelling units per year, not to mention provide access for those additional forty homes. So that's, you know, as I said in my presentation, that was sort of part of what's being offered by the applicant is reduced development potential on the site in addition to the open space assets.
And I think there's a juxtaposition between, you know, open space and growth management sometimes in a way, because that density bonus for affordable would allow it to two hundred and thirty-five units. And the more units in a subdivision, the bigger a subdivision, the more readily it can achieve higher scores in some of these growth management criteria. So in a way, growth management pushes for bigger subdivisions because they can achieve that higher, more competitive score. And the density bonus, there could be two hundred and five, thirty-five units here.
Okay, I was, I was asking, other than houses along Mountain View Road, thinking that you've got to achieve the density other ways, you could achieve a hundred and forty or whatever by clustering more tightly or having one multi. I was, I was assuming that that it didn't necessarily mean a different number, but it did certainly avoid a certain placement. But wouldn't it probably have some community space? I think it goes to the D R B process, like a playground or something. That seems to be happening in most developments that come through with this kind of quantity.
Yes, but it's specifically qualified that it be private, that it need not be maintained by the town. So that wetland buffer area would be private open space. Any neighborhood park, they would create like a pool or a community room. That would be private H O A.
Yeah.
In the growth management scenario.
In the growth management scenario.
And what I was trying to project is what the growth management plus D R B review of a typical project, where would we wind up that was different from this other than no houses and not eleven acres?
Yeah. And I, I prepared that bylaw report or this bylaw audit for the planning commission, you know, highlighting each chapter, like growth management, the access, where we think changes would need to be made for this and where the planning commission wouldn't need to make changes. So like landscaping, outdoor lighting, a residential subdivision, no matter what, can comply with those existing standards. So if the planning commission were to move it forward to community meeting or to a committee, we would craft a charge that's based off of those bylaws standards and gives them some, you know, bumper guards and goalposts, commit, committee, go do these things within the bylaw.
If you want to show the, the last page of this audit, I think that's quite helpful. It, it's a little small on the screen here, but yeah, so this is the, just for folks in the audience, this is some a typical way that that scoring is done in growth management. And so this is what the, Matt and Emily were referring to. And it's essentially, you know, kind of a grade, like how, how well are you meeting expectations? And do you have some, some room to improve, right? So if a project is going through this process and wants to improve its score, it has some feedback on what is desired by the town. Okay, so these are the things that are baked into the town plan. And so just to be clear again, this is within both management process, right? So what's up on the screen is, is a typical process, not the specific plan that we're, that we're entertaining.
Could I grab an initial comment here? So the plan that we have shown at this stage, I would describe it as being comparable to what the D R B would be shown at pre-application. It was not designed to be a growth management submittal. And so I, I guess I, I'm a little nervous about the scoring there because this wasn't prepared to be a growth management scoring submittal. So that, that there's a potential for it to score more than thirty points is great. But this was not prepared to be a growth management submittal. And when an applicant does do a growth management submittal, it's more than just a one-two dimensional sheet of paper. There's a whole narrative and an applicant makes statements and pledges and all kinds of things. So this was not prepared for that end. So I'm not discounting any of your commentary, just, I wanted to state that.
Yeah, no, fair enough. But this was more just for folks to understand, like what would the sort of normal process be versus the specific plan process look like? So we understand. Um, I do have a quick question, Ken. You mentioned that the legend is missing, which as a geographer pains me terribly.
I didn't draw the plan. That's my excuse.
Could you please decipher the other, the non-yellow? So you said yellow would be one story. Most of them are duplexes, I assume, because they're side by side like that?
Yes.
What are the brown and then the sort of checkerboard ones?
I, like you, I would have benefited from the legend. To be honest with you, you know, it, you know, the, the plan was prepared by, you know, the engineer and I was really focused on sort of the land in general and not so much in the dwelling unit type. So I apologize for that. We will, we will provide that information.
That would be super helpful. I think there's a lot of interest in exactly like for people to try to envision that.
Right.
You know, what is that checkerboard thing? Is that like a four plus? Or is it one big house? You know, that's going to really shift people's thinking about, about the, the aesthetics and, you know, the, the types of, you know, the numbers of households who would be moving and then all those.
Understood. And what I can say is that, you know, where you see a rectangle and there is a line in the middle of it, you can assume that's a duplex. And then where there's, you know, where there's a, a rectangle and it's just the, the lines on the outside and there's no line in the middle. Actually, you could spray, there, there's an example, but that would be a single family dwelling. The ones to the next of it, you see there's a line in the middle of it, then those would be, that would be a duplex. So but we will, we will provide, assuming that we move forward, we will provide that additional information.
Okay, other planning commissioners, some of you online, any questions from you folks?
I, I could just summarize to where, where I'm at because it might, I, I know I've been in the audience situation often and wonder how important is the thing that's really important to me. And I would just say as a planning commissioner, I would want to see this project as part of the specific plan process if it goes forward, achieve a higher growth management score, have more of those things. And what I'm weighing in my mind, but to me, the bottom line is a hundred more dwelling unit equivalents in the next four or five years against eleven acres of view shed. That's, that's to me the bottom line. I, I don't see a lot of difference other than that.
Kate, could you, sorry, I'm starting with additional planning commissioners. So just want to make sure they have a chance.
I don't have anything at this time.
This is Alex. I don't have anything at this time. I'm really interested to hear the public comments.
That's fine.
Same here. Thank you, Megan.
Thank you, Sheila. Okay. All right. So we will open it to public comment and what I will do is propose that we, if there are comments both in the room and online, that we will go back and forth. Okay. Terry McKeig style. Okay, Terry Zittrich, go ahead.
Hi, so I just want to say that I, I really resonated with what Chapin was saying about the development, that is that they need to have open space anyway. You know, where would it be, I guess, if, if it isn't along the road there? I guess they could, I guess they could place it somewhere. But it's unclear what the town is really getting. We're getting a little road frontage on Mountain View in this thing called the view shed. We're going to see the mountains, whether the one-story duplexes are there or not. When you look at, you know, when you come over that ridge, you see our house in front of the mountains as well. And it doesn't particularly bother me. So I'm, I'm not seeing a real substantial public benefit from sharing a strip of land. Also, I think the, the developer or or ex-planning commissioner was saying that they would build another forty-some houses. It's unclear with, with the way the wetlands are that you could actually get another forty-some houses in there as well as providing some, some open space. So that's unclear as well. And just having another, an acceleration of growth in a town where people are mostly screaming about, please, stop going so fast, you know, our services are, are being threatened or, or at the breaking point, our schools are at the breaking point. It's unclear that this benefit, and I don't know how the benefit, it's unclear how the benefit is exactly weighed to me, but it's, it's unclear that this, any benefit here outweighs the, the perils to more than doubling the development you would do in the zone. You'd go from twenty, and if there were some, I guess, affordable housing, twenty-five, but now you're talking about doubling that to fifty. So I'm hoping the planning commission says there is no significant benefit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the comments. I do want to just point you toward those of you who have access to it right now toward Emily's F A Q, giant F A Q. She does address several issues and provide some ground truthing on concerns about things like school services and so forth. So I'll just kind of point that out as a resource. Great, thank you. She put the link in the chat. Okay, so comment from the room, if there are questions or comments. Yes, go ahead. Can you say your name, please?
Sure, I'm Sandra Barber, Sandra Martel Barber. My parents are Andre and Pat, who are abutting landlords. My mom wanted me to ask the first question, which was, we have a bike path that not the actual bike path, but the land that's supposed to be a bike path that butts up to this property and it's supposed to continue on. I'm not sure if that's accounted for, if the bike path is part of this or not. Then maybe somebody can answer me. That was my mom's question. My couple of notes on this is just looking at this plan. I'm not really sure why you don't have a road going off of Mountain View. You don't have that house in there, but you at least have the road. And there's your second entrance. So not sure about that. Also Peggy Larson's property is right next to it. There should be a right-of-way to it and sewer access going to her property. And, you know, the wetlands that they can't build on, that they're now saying that the horse farms want to use. I haven't heard from Mike yet as to whether it's something he can actually use. Is he just going to put horse trails through it? If it's too wet, it's going to be too wet for horses to be doing ripetics and stuff in it. So I was curious from Michael that that was actually something that worked for him or not.
It's actually, we actually have the horses in the bastions there.
That's where they are right now?
Yeah.
Okay, so it is, it's something that you guys can use.
Yeah, it is. It's what we're using now.
Okay, but yeah, that's second road access and sewer and right-of-way to Peggy and what happens to the bike path?
Yeah. A moment ago said, Ken, this, Ken said this was kind of like a pre-application, that early sketch concept. Through whether specific plan or conventional development review, things like connectivity and access would be considered. The town has the newly adopted official map. This was approved in conjunction with the form-based code. And the faint white or yellow dashed line on this plan shows desired multi-use path connections, one running along Mountain View Road and then a desired connection from Old Stage Road across Savage and North Ridge connecting to that existing multi-use path. I do have printouts of these in the room if folks want to pass them around. The path you were talking about, your mom's question, so when Coyote Run was subdivided, there was the provision of a little park at the end of Coyote Run Road and about forty foot wide right-of-way for a future town or park that runs along the north side of North Ridge. And that's shown on this map in that blue dashed. The gray dash on this line is also from the official map. It's a desired street connection. So on the Glazer property, a northwest, a, a north-south connection from Mountain View down and then an east-west connection from Old Stage to Martel. Those dashes are considered more conceptual. They haven't been scoped. We don't have an actual line proposed, but the general goal of having roads connecting across. So to your point about, you know, could that cul-de-sac connect up to Mountain View Road? Maybe that would be something that could be worked out in the specific plan process. Conventional development review would certainly push for it as well as providing some sort of right-of-way connection. If Lars never came into develop, that a street could connect through there as well. Yeah, this map is trying to show Yeah, this map is trying to show the Glazer proposal in relation to both existing and proposed multi-use path and street connections in the area.
So the bike path coming off from us isn't going anywhere now. With, I'm sorry, you lost me. I mean, I can see the white. I can see the purple.
Yeah, it's not going anywhere right now. Um, through a specific plan, you know, if this land is given to the town, then there would be an opportunity to connect it through. You would have to get state permits and sometimes the state can be pretty pokey about trying to connect a path through a wetland and forest, even if it's the town that's pursuing the application. But it would be possible because they're not concluding it with development. It would be open space area. So in the future, if they were to connect through, it would be, um, not included in this case.
Okay. Um, so on move on, we have a question online from Brian Forrest. Go to Brian.
All right. Good evening. Uh, and one of the, uh, one of the, um, benefits that this property could accrue to the town and is specified in, in the town plan is the diversity of housing. Are there any plans for low-income housing in here or, uh, affordable housing? This, uh, this mix.
Yeah, sure. Um, so at this point, it's all the answer would be proposed to be market rate. So typically when we talk about affordable housing, it's usually, it's, it's meeting some specific price parameters as defined in the bylaw, either at a hundred or eighty percent of the area median income. And so far in the proposal, it's only been conceptualized as being market rate. So whatever the prevailing market pricing would be for the unit type at that point in time.
Well, I would, I would ask that the, uh, planning commission consider housing, uh, for affordable entry level or employee housing units being, uh, vital to the talent. It was something that we need probably even more than open space at this point. Thank you.
Hey, thanks, Brian. Hey, folks in the room, it's your turn. Yes, go ahead. State your name, please.
My name is Georgianne Jenkins and I'm at Old Stage Road. And, um, so I have a question. Uh, how many, I guess, growth management proposals, how many developments are out there right now that are either in the growth management plan? In other words, this specific plan would jump over how many people who have already been in the process?
Great question.
Yeah. So right now, um, in the upcoming March 2023 growth management hearing, I anticipate five subdivisions that are going to be requesting a hundred and fourteen point five dwelling unit equivalents where there's only fifteen market, twenty-three total across those ten fiscal years. If this were to go through, I think the proposal would be for these twenty-five per year to be an add-on. That table we shared earlier, it probably would be its own table, separate from what the other subdivisions are competing for. That request of a hundred and fourteen point five dwelling unit equivalents means existing developments that are in the queue, like Summerfield, Academy Mount Gulf, or Trinity RZD Baptist Church could take anywhere from four to nine years to get all of their allocation that's being requested.
How many is that?
I think Trinity needs like forty or so and Academy needs like, I think, no, Academy needs like forty and I think Trinity needs more like fifty to, to get all of their allocation that's requested.
In short, I would expect the schedule we showed you, which allows for two hundred dwelling unit equivalents across ten years to be full. And I would expect this project to build out in addition to those two hundred at some point during that same tenure timeframe. So two twenty-five instead of, or sorry, three hundred instead of two hundred across a ten-year timeframe.
So is it correct, am I correct in assuming that if this specific plan does not get approved and the Glazer property has to go back through the development review process with the others, that it's likely not to be buildable for ten years?
It could take a very long time, um, to get off the ground.
Ten years.
Well, it, it could come in, um, there, there are some units open in the next upcoming fiscal years. It could get started in a year or two, but it would have a very long build-out schedule ahead of it. So what we would usually see when a development gets stretched out like that is they wait a couple of years until there's enough houses worth building to, um, you know, to, to get started on infrastructure, to build roads, et cetera. Uh, and then they go forward. Uh, I will raise, just because it's an appropriate moment, another possibility that landowners in a place like this, uh, would probably be considering, if I was in their situation, I'd be considering it as well, which is to build a subdivision with far fewer units in it, um, on very large lots and sell those for a great deal of money. So, you know, one of the things that growth management ends up doing as the schedule gets filled is it starts to encourage people to do far more conventional large lot subdivision with, you know, individual substantial, generally fairly expensive homes on them because I just, you know, it's going to take so long to build a larger number. So we do see that happening sometimes.
But is it not, is it not correct to think that single-family lots are not in the growth management part? Don't, don't you have to have an exemption, exemption to divide your property into two building lots and then get approval to build those lots?
Sure. But I, I, I could do a five-watt subdivision of, on this property next year and I could get it on the schedule. Yes.
If it was approved.
Such, such a project is, is possibly approvable. So when we're talking about different alternatives that a landowner faces, different patterns for development, patterns for development that support the provision of open space or public open space versus those that, you know, privatize all of the land or result in different outcomes that may or may not align with the town plan. I think it's good for participants in this process to understand that, you know, landowners face this really big spectrum of options. And one of the things about Williston that's different from any other town, any other city in Vermont, is that we do this growth management thing that, um, adds another consideration to what people are thinking about when they're thinking about not just what can I do with my land, but when can I do it? And if I can't do it in the next five years, does that change what I'm going to do? And, you know, we, we spend a lot of time in staff, talking to landowners and explaining this very complicated system to them to try to help them make those informed decisions. And that's kind of a light bulb we see coming on as they start saying, well, maybe it's a small, a small subdivision right now versus a much larger subdivision five years from now versus, I'm just going to sell it to somebody who can afford to hold it for a bunch of years, um, and then do something. So just, I, it's really useful to me if more people in Williston understand both what growth management is and how it influences landowner decisions because ultimately that influences community outcomes. And ultimately, it's why we're here reviewing somebody who wants an exception from that system in exchange for a piece of public open space.
Thank you. We don't, oh, uh, let's go back online and then we'll come to you next. Okay. Okay. Uh, Wayne Wilkinson, you're next. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Uh, I ju- just had a quick, uh, question, uh, related to traffic. I don't know to what extent the planning commission or, or anyone has done any analysis about the impact of this development uh, on the traffic on Old Stage Road in particular. Probably most of us who travel that road on a, on a, you know, the morning commute are used to, you know, being backed up, trying to get onto Williston Road, you know, five, six, eight, ten cars maybe. And I know, uh, the impact of that is today even, it drives traffic, uh, you know, down Longwood Drive or Maple Road uh, as a way to get out and around, uh, that intersection. And I, I'm just curious, you know, by my estimate, we're probably looking at maybe a hundred and fifty to two hundred additional cars, uh, you know, tied to this development, you know, are we, uh, do we have a plan to absorb that traffic, um, on Old Stage Road and, and elsewhere in the community?
Wants to take that one.
Yeah.
I didn't put it in the memo.
Yeah, refer to Emily's mega FAQ, but in brief, um, usually through the DRB, but certainly sometimes the planning commission thinks about traffic too. When a development is proposed, um, it's inevitably going to add more traffic to the roads that it, that it accesses into the nearby intersections, um, that that traffic will interact with. What the DRB's review of traffic is usually about is how much, how many more vehicle trips will be created during the busiest time of day on the road, which is typically the busiest hour between four and six P M, Monday through Friday, what we call the P M peak. So.
The A M is fun at work.
The A M is similar, but the P M is busier. So we assess for the P M because it's the busier time of day. Uh, it's when things are more compressed because people run errands on their way home from work more than they do, uh, on, on their way out in the morning. So, um, it, what we look at and what DRB looks at is whether or not they want the applicant to prepare a traffic study, which is a, a study prepared by an engineer who's qualified to do such things that predicts how much traffic that new development will produce and where it will go and, and which nearby roads and intersections it will burden. And the outcome of that traffic study, um, is not a go-no for the go or no-go decision for the development itself, but rather should that development be responsible for making an improvement to those nearby roads or intersections? Or should that development have to provide a turn lane into the road that will be accessing that development or, or a signal at that intersection or a nearby one? And, um, long and the short of it, um, you're looking at both the background traffic in those nearby roads and their sections. How much is there already? And what's this new thing going to do to that? And then there are standards that the engineer uses to determine whether the installation of an improvement in the form of usually a turn lane or a signal or, or a better signal is warranted. So we talk about whether those improvements are warranted or not, and whether they need to be required as a condition of approval of the development. So this development will create more traffic is a given. This development will create more traffic is not a reason that a development in Williston or anywhere else is denied. It's a reason that an improvement might be required. Now that, at that point, you may have a developer who says, well, if you're going to make me build a signal, I'm, it's not worth it anymore for me to proceed with my development. That does happen, uh, occasionally, not very frequently in Williston. But traffic analysis usually happens at the DRB, usually happens towards the end of the review process, usually results in a discussion about whether improvements on nearby roads and intersections are warranted or not, and whether they will be required as a condition of approval.
Follow-up question. Does this, is this special project then seeking a bypass to that request for a traffic study, which would normally happen in the DRB? Because if they're
No. Okay. So, so we have, we have an entire bylaw chapter about access connectivity and traffic studies. I think in the bylaw audit, um, the only, I think, access may be where the forty unit metric is, but that is the only metric where any flexibility is being requested from the bylaw.
Can I just add to that comment that, um, when an application goes through the specific plan, it requires review and approval by the planning commission and it requires review and approval by the select board. But that's not the end. It still requires review and approval by the DRB. So the development review process is that indicated. That's where the, the, the DRB as part of their plan review, which is sort of technical at a really, uh, grainy level would require that. So this doesn't, this would not be exempt from that. It would have to go through these steps before it got there. So it, it, it's basically adding additional steps of review, but it doesn't, doesn't, uh, eliminate it.
The only project I'm familiar with that went through the traffic study was part of growth management for the Catamount project. And so if this is seeking to bypass growth, growth management, then it wouldn't necessarily get that traffic pattern review.
No, it wouldn't because growth management is an intermediary step as part of a subdivision or a project's review. It's not the whole thing. After growth management is over, a project still has to submit what's called a discretionary permit application. And it's at that discretionary permit application where all of the formal engineering studies are, um, uh, are completed and they're reviewed by the DRB. So this project would not be exempt from that. It would still have to go through that review.
Yeah. I showed us one, you know, circle on here, but it's actually more than just one step. It's, you would go through pre-app, probably go to growth management to get those units that are on its table, go through the discretionary permit process. And, and that's where, um, the traffic study would be provided and any other mechanical things that the planning commission is required. So if this land is going to be given to the town and if it's going to be set up in a way that Wind Swat Farm can use it, there's going to be the conveyance and all the legal documents and the lease agreement or yada, yada, all that stuff. And the part of the discretionary permit would be, okay, show me all of that paperwork, get it legal reviewed. Is it ready for the town to then accept all that? So that if the DRB is signing off on the permits, there's guarantees that all those substantial benefits are moving forward at the same time.
I want to go. Go ahead.
I'm Tina Moss and Michael and I own Wind Swat Farm. Um, I've been there for forty years and, um, um, who has, uh, expressed gratitude to the Glazers for letting us use the land for the twenty years that they've owned it. And also gratitude for people who are supporting us. Um, personally, I'd like to see the land stay open. And, um, Matt said that one of the options that can go simultaneously to the specific plan is conservation. And I personally would like to look into that. I don't know what, um, Jacob Blazer has done, but I'd like to look into it and find some way that he would be happy enough to sell or give or whatever you have to do to have a conservation easement and have that land open. Um, and if anybody here wants to help me, that would be great because I have no idea. So to contact me, um, I have a website, I have two websites. Um, I have the Wind Swat Farm website, which is windswatfarmbt.com. And I have a photography, um, website that's Tina T Moss for photography. Neither of that has my contact information. And I'd like to see that happen before, I mean, I don't know if the specific plan will go, but there's until next April, March. So I'd like to look into it and I'd love to have some help.
Can you say your name, please?
Dorothy Wilkinson. I mean, you know, yeah, I mean, that's a bank that deals with property and central in the town and we've got developments everywhere around. It's like everywhere. But, um, if I understand the owners, yes, you, you want to retire or you want to, you know, live comfortably and you're entitled to have, you know, the benefit of the value of that land. But what other way could that be done? I don't, I don't know if this is possible, but we have a lot of banks in this town. If they're top of banks, like it would get donation towards a trust. So the, you know, it would go, the money, the, the owners would get the, the value of the land and then that, then the land would then turn be overturned over to the town in a trust similar to, um, the, the bike, you know,
Yeah, I think that, um, part of getting the conservation would be fundraising.
Right.
And I think that, I mean, because I would imagine to collect enough money to make Jacob be happy, it's going to be a lot of money.
Oh, I see a lot of banks.
There'd be a lot of bank skills.
It's giving back money. They want, they get scholarships, they exist, they got like, this would be a portfolio, you know, a bunch of land. And then it tends, other things we, we use for many other things because maybe there can be a little answer here. There can be, you know, walking trails or anything to be real community, not just a little strip of. not just a little strip of land in the middle of these houses that isn't really good to use by the community. It could be a true benefit to the community where there's so many you know, there's a lot of other uses, dog park. We, we are the only town that has no real park. We have a community park that they play school playground. There's a school playground because a bunch of mothers in the late nineteen ninety to early two thousand, so the playground is dangerous. And there we have a nice playground, and that was what created the community park. But it's really a school playground. And we don't have like Maple Street Park. We don't have that and others in the community. We are, how many people are standing up? We don't have a a community room. We don't have a senior room. We don't have. There's other things, you know, that we need in this town. And we're getting way ahead on development in the housing, the building. And my kid went through the school system when the, you know, he had, he had a trailer attached. They had the highest number of kids during those years. Then they sold the trailer for a dollar and now I don't know what's gonna happen. It's really houses and houses and houses. But what's gonna happen with the school? Then they're gonna be over, you know, crowded or we're gonna be in the same position. And then again, we're gonna have to, you know, develop Allenbrook into the mirror image that it was originally supposed to be built. Only half that school is still, you know, built. So you go on and on about the problems that all of this can just kind of snowball into where you have overdevelopments. I don't understand the fact that, you know, that at all. I wasn't here, but I have read. I don't understand why you were trying to fact that. And I don't understand.
Do you wanna respond to some of these?
There's a way that this could be something else and more.
Yeah, we're gonna have some responses from the staff to fill in a few of these information.
And I see three themes, land conservation, community center, schools. I'm gonna start with schools and say it's similar to that traffic impact assessment. And a traffic impact study isn't a no or no go for development. Schools, when a new dwelling is created, they pay a school impact fee. There's also transportation impact fees and parks and recreation impact fees. And that money is tied to a specific project. Currently, the impact fee right now is being used to pay down the C V U addition bond. So if the schools were to get to a point where they needed an addition or another expansion, the Champlain Valley School District, which is beyond Williston, it's the Champlain Valley area, including neighboring communities like Heinsburg. That school district would say, okay, here's what that project's gonna cost. Here's the bond. And then a new impact fee would be assessed so that new development pays its, quote, fair share of that expansion. Because it's a school district, if growth happens in Heinsburg or another community, if they needed a new middle school or elementary school, that would be paid for at that district level. Do you wanna clarify any more on school district funding, et cetera?
No, I think. Yeah, I think, I think you summarized it well. There, there could be a point where school facilities for Williston need to be expanded, that that would be addressed by the district. It would be addressed on a district wide basis. And I think to Emily's point, with C V S D as a district, there could be growth in in another member community that results in a need for improvement in that community, and that will be assessed district wide. Where we are all in this together in a way that's different from the way school funding was probably experienced by a lot of folks in this room prior to consolidation. But we do, we do work with the district, both to communicate incoming development. We worked heavily with the demographer who prepared the recent report for the school board to look at. That report identified some possible incremental increases in student population over the next five years and and a leveling off after that. And that was a report that was based on our, our most optimistic or or pessimistic, depending on how you feel about new development, assessment of how fast we thought all of the subdivisions on the books were gonna move forward, based on myself and Emily looking at the approvals from last year. So it was based on up to the minute information about what was coming in. There are some other demographic forces that affect schools, including shrinking household size and aging population that tend to undermine what the schools experience from new growth. But, you know, schools is one, I think that the question initially was about impacts of services overall. This is something the town pays a lot of attention to. That same sort of prediction of new residential growth is one that our staff works on and and communicates to the select board regularly. It's something we look at in terms of managing how the town spends its limited wastewater treatment capacity and how we think about the ways that the town might grow in terms of the services it provides, et cetera. And I'll just add that, you know, we manage different kinds of growth differently. So we manage the addition of new dwelling units to Williston down to the, down to the half dwelling unit equivalent, right? How, how do we numerically manage the addition of new commercial development in Williston? Do we have growth management for commercial development in Williston? No, we have development standards and we have impact fees. And we have all the other tools that every other one of the municipalities in Vermont has at its disposal. Growth management is really unique and it's extra. But Williston has a number of tools that it makes heavy use of in trying to capture the impact that new growth and development, commercial or otherwise, has on the town's need to provide services.
Yeah. The second one, community center. This is really exciting to say, but finally, the community center and library scoping study is off the ground. You know, throughout the TAF corners, my TAF corners vision process. And even prior to that, when we do public comment, one of the number one things we hear from you guys and from the community is community center, senior center, a need for dog park, a need for community space. A steering committee has been established. And pretty soon, I say stay tuned for public input on what does community center mean? What are the facilities we want? Is it a pool or a dog park or senior center? All of that's gonna be able to come to the table as part of the scoping study. John Hemelgarn, who's a local architect, also on the development review board who lives in town. He is, I believe, the lead consultant on that. The library director, Parks and Rec director are also gonna be involved in this. And at the end of that will be an output, what do we want? Where will it go? And how much is it gonna cost? And then, you know, assess from there, does the town wanna, you know, build or or create a community center space? The third question about land conservation, I would be remiss in this meeting to not share this article from the Burlington Free Press in January nineteen eighty-three. This was when that prior five hundred unit subdivision was proposed for this property and including lands that are now wildflower circle or path of lane. And there's an exceptional quote in here. I think we ought to go and take a, take up a collection and buy the damn farm and that would be the end of it. And that was said back then. And when I showed that PowerPoint slide about those different tracks, specific plan's gonna take a long time. And another track on that option would be to pursue land conservation. And Matt, do you wanna provide a little clarity around, you know, the town's role in land conservation in the R F?
Well, sure. So, you know, in among its many public policy goals and comprehensive plan goals, the town has a goal to conserve open space and to do it based on a set of predetermined priorities, including environmental quality, wildlife habitat, quality of view shed, need for recreational space, et cetera, et cetera. We've done a couple of priority parcel projects to try to actually rate various pieces of open space and determine how the town could best spend its limited resources on conserving land. And by limited, what I mean is we have this environmental reserve fund. We have money the town sets aside in its capital budget to purchase development rights or purchase land for conservation. And we, we put in somewhere between fifty and seventy-five thousand dollars a year into that fund. We have in that fund right now about three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. How much land in Williston can you buy with three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars all by yourself? Not very much. And what Williston does do with that land is try to make efficient use of it. Try to use it to leverage other funding mechanisms. And that was really key in the purchase of the McCullough property where the Catamount Apple Family Center is. Williston spent about four hundred thousand dollars to buy a four million dollar piece of property. It's the cheapest land you guys ever bought. You don't even know it. And your, your, your grandchildren will be thrilled at the deal you bought on that land. It will be conserved forever. So Williston does commit some money and some staff time and resources. Melinda Scott, who's not in the room here tonight, conservation planner, was instrumental in working through all of those interested parties that had to agree to something in order to buy Catamount and working with other landowners as well. It is something the town does. But we don't have, you know, five million dollars just sitting in the account waiting to go buy a chunk of land. We have some money to try to make some conservation happen based on some predetermined priorities and community preferences and desires. So would the town be interested in helping out with this or any other conservation effort? Sure. And we, we have mechanisms to do that. We have a track record being successful at it. But again, we have three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. And we put in another fifty to seventy-five every year, some years. And when, and when times are tough and the select board is trying to not raise taxes, the E R F is one of the things they don't put money into. During our COVID years, we didn't put money in that account. So it's something the town does at a, at a limited scale, based on, based on community preference and the town's willing to to charge itself money to do it.
Okay, I'm sorry, but we are running out of time and Ruben has had his digital hand up for so long, he's probably lost the feeling in it. Ruben, go ahead. You're gonna be the final question or comment of this evening. Of course, this is not the end of the commentary process. There's a lot more review time and space for this, so moving forward. So go ahead, Ruben.
Yeah, thank you all. Can people hear me? Okay, thank you. I, I think there's the, for this, for this particular specific plan, I think there's a lot of implications, both short term and long term, that I think the planning commission and even the conservation commission would, would need to be thinking about. These implications are, you know, they're not only for, for right now, but, you know, for our kids and our kids' kids. And so if you're familiar with the area, this is a major school zone directly for both Allenbrook School and Wilson Central School and C V U indirectly. This is, you know, an area where children ride the school bus, children bike or walk to school, people just walk about. So you will also be familiar, the Old Stage Road provides a through traffic of people from neighboring towns. And at Old Stage Road and Williston Road, it becomes a bottleneck, almost impassable. I would argue more so in the morning because I take that, I commute that area, especially during rush hours for both school and work. So adding two more outlets of traffic from two neighborhoods from the specific plan to Old Stage Road is in no way addressing the traffic and safety issues already encountered on this road. So and people have to put up signs for, for Morris to slow down. So when you put a, a development like this in the area that bypasses the regular process of the town, it makes me, you know, wonder, well, there may be good planning intention for the specific plan. There is limited consideration for the long term impact of the plan. To me, this is quite backward thinking, like, let's do something now and we'll have the town, the school district, the state figure out the rest later. And so the single major issue I see is the lack of mechanism in place that forces different offices from the town, enforcement agencies at the county interstate level, and school districts to collaborate with each other closely and practically on matters that impact the entire town. We cannot just separate these overarching issues whenever a development is being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your letter, too.
Yeah, and we, we did read your letter. It's very good. It's online. A lot of important issues. Okay, we need to call an end to the, to the community meeting piece of this. It is eight forty-four. We go till nine. And and the planning commission needs to discuss our next steps. And so I would like to invite planning commissioners to to share their thoughts at this point and we can move from there. If anybody needs to leave, I totally get it.
Can I just ask? I've been in other meetings too, like select board meetings and things. I often wonder, like, what is the impact of hearing public? Because I often feel like we say what we need to say and then they just do what they wanna do anyway. So I'm wondering.
We hear you.
What is the impact of this? You're getting ready to talk about next steps. Did you hear anything that's being said? What, what do you take from this as individuals on this?
We take it very seriously. We take, we take our positions as, to speak for myself, or what the others fill you in as well, if you like, but that we, you know, we're residents, parents, taxpayers, homeowners, commuters, just like everyone else in Williston. And we want what's good for the town and we want to know what you want. Because we, you know, often want the same things. And even if we disagree on a, a particular point, it's important to us that if we are an outlier, that we recognize that and come to a compromise. So we do have, we have a variety of folks on the planning commission. We are at different ages and stages of life and, you know, gender and lots of different positionalities. And, and so we, we bring a lot of different views within that and we absolutely listen to you. We have read all of the survey answers. We've read the letters. We, and this is ongoing. I know there were complaints about form-based code. People felt like they weren't heard on Front porch farm. I read from porch farm every day. We are, we have formal mechanisms for feedback that we read, we take into account. And each of us represents in our discussions, you know, a variety of views. We remind each other, remember that one person said they were concerned about this. And we take that very seriously.
But are you gonna actually get a chance to hear from those of us that are here? We all have a reason for being here. We didn't just come to listen to some of this and then half an hour's worth that could be for the, for the general public. This is, you know, we've been more and more and more, we just keep having more and more developments. And it's about time that we stopped and thought about what we can do that will benefit everyone in this town, everyone above and beyond building more houses. And I've spent eighteen years on the Conservation Commission. So I'm very familiar with what is going on. And I agree, you know, we don't even need a traffic study where all the traffic were sitting through three and four lights at Mountain View and Two A. We don't even have any lights at the end of Old Stage on Route Two. So good luck at around five o'clock at night if you want to get out. So I just feel frustrated. I just feel frustrated. All of these people came here. I'm sure to have some idea of what everybody else is thinking.
Okay, so do we, do, first of all, I absolutely appreciate your Conservation Commission service. We totally recognize that. We, there are other options. We could potentially reopen, reopen the survey. We can also extend the community meeting. And if that is something that the community would like to participate in, we can do that. We can't do it tonight. I don't, we're not the select board. We don't stay up till midnight. But we can continue, continue the community meeting.
Well, let me just say one other thing then. For twenty-four years I've lived here, I've done surveys for transportation, for parts of the town plan to be redone. We did a big wings project for three days, one whole weekend. Everybody in this town came. We put our little stickers up there of all the things we like and the things we don't like and everything. Over and over, we've talked about community centers. Now you have a new committee, but you have a perfect example right now of the perfect place if you wanna put in a community center. You can put it there. It has water, it has sewers. It wouldn't have business traffic at the peak points. I really want you to think about that. And I do think that the town serves at least one more public hearing on this, where it is public hearing.
I'd like to speak to your comments, Jude, a little bit and also a little bit in the back. Um, I don't know if you hear when I, I, before public comment, I said where I stood so that people would know what I heard and what I thinking that and this is really balancing a hundred more homes in the next five years against eleven acres of view shed. And that's, that's what it reduces to, for me. And I have read all the comments and I've heard people say things that I have read them, have been put in the survey. And, and Mr. Esposito, whatever his name is, Ruben, wrote a letter, just said the same things you just said. So I, uh, what I'm wondering is who here has a comment, not because I want it heavily now, but because I wanna know whether I wanna say we should continue here. Who was gonna comment that has not already put their comment in the survey questions that I would have read already? You know, who has something additional that I have not heard through the process and was, and said to me?
So, um.
Because obviously if we went ahead, those comments could go to the, um, could first, the advisory committee. But we don't wanna start a process that's gonna just stop if we know that it's not gonna make it through, so.
Can I say, when I looked at the website, it was not obvious that there was even open survey. I was looking at the agenda for this meeting. I was not aware that the committee was taking public comments and I looked on it two weeks ago, so, um, all candor, I just, I was, I looked at it quickly, but I wasn't aware.
So, I'm okay.
That, so can we do, oh, Shayla, go ahead Shayla.
No, sorry, can you just, because I can't see the room, can, can you report out what, who is raising?
Sorry, there, there are probably, uh, forty people in the room and I would say at least half of them raise their hand.
Oh, I was gonna say six or eight people said they definitely have something that was not already conveyed to us.
That's fine. Adding whoever raised their hand over there.
Yeah.
And I also could summarize after this, that like the comments we got with the survey, there seems to be more public comment about slowing down growth than there is about preserving the view shed. You know, to me, those were the things we were balancing. And the public input we got was more about continuing to slow down growth by the mechanisms we have in place. It doesn't say that's where I'm gonna wind up, but I, that's what I feel so far.
What are our options?
I think your options would be if you wanted to continue the community meeting to your December sixth, sixth meeting. I mean, it's five minutes to nine, so I don't think you're gonna be working through the staff report considering any motions. So I think it would be acceptable to continue to December sixth. We can reopen the online survey, um, and then folks can continue with testimony, um, at the next meeting.
Okay, we're good. All right. We're just gonna do minutes, so.
Yeah, folks, before you leave, um, if you haven't signed in, please sign in on the sheet. If your email is neatly typed, we can add you to our list for this project. If you had a burning question from tonight that wasn't answered, give me or Matt a call or email tomorrow. Um, we'll try and put you in the right direction.
And you wanna say we're gonna.
Yeah, well, yeah, we'll definitely open up the online survey and. No, that's still there, it's different. The side when I'm on the road, it's hard to. Well, I guess.
Um, lady commissioner's online, can you hang in for a moment, please?
If they all have an early, or they can deal with it. I just wanted to drive it up to the board.
I'm sorry.
You would be able to find it out and you could see that first subdivision would be required to do that step.
Yeah.
But you wouldn't be looking at that for the nine years timeline that this part, it would be a lot faster.
I didn't know you hired Andrew.
Sorry.
My students.
He didn't call in any favors.
No, he did, I didn't know it was, and I did send you.
We have the paper.
We're just talking about it, oh, Megan.
The resolution.
Did Eric, is Eric gonna sign up for the signature?
Uh, yeah, Melinda's over there, she went over online to do that. I mean, as long as we talk about it and they say it's okay for Megan to sign up, we can take care of it.
Megan, I'm assuming we're not supposed to be understanding what's going on?
Um, there's, there's a lot of people in the room still talking, although not us. And the, our last item is, I just need, um, to know whether you all, uh, planning commissioners approve the municipal planning grant application. It's toward the end of the agenda. Um, it's pretty non-controversial, but we just want, um, full buy-in before I sign it. So if you just wanna like, give me a thumbs up or tell me yes, then I will go ahead and sign it.
Okay, thank you, Alex.
We're, we're, we're getting endorsements on the MPG.
Thank you too.
Just keep screenshot that to send to ACC board.
Yeah, Chapin and Kelly, thank you Kate, okay, great. So were you unanimous in approving the MPG?
Great.
Um, and I make a motion to adjourn.
I think that's just fine.
Baggin did.
Okay, thank you.
Good to see you.
Good night. Wow.
Yeah, I mean, the main, the main point of the MPG is, remember all that public engagement we did for the TAF corners? Let's do that for the town.
Yeah.
And, and not the crudité.
Right.
Literally the same.
I know, right, this was awesome though.
No, this is really good. I saw a lot of heads nodding, a lot of people understanding some of the sticky points of this. And that's what's so important is to get people to understand.